Testing, testing.
I know we keep them down.
Hey, I can get four. All you need. I know where there's one that's unused, too. I love you, Doris.
It's that one on the east side of our high school. That area between Third Avenue off Third Avenue. Yeah. Whatever that street is, or on its east and west, all of it. Just through the high school.
Good evening. Welcome to the council meeting tonight. Today's date is August 14, 2023. The time is 5:30 PM. We are at the City Hall Council Chambers at Ten West State Street, and we are calling the regularly scheduled city council meeting to order. Would those able join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice our
Roll call, please.
Hoop.
Here.
Isom.
Here.
Cal.
Here.
Lottie Hoff.
Here.
Schneider.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
Very good. We have a quorum, full count for the six of us, and maybe we can expand that later tonight. Time is now for public comments, so I have to read this proviso to you. Members of the public may make comments on any item that is not on the agenda at this time. Take the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and limit your comments to three minutes or less unless the mayor authorizes more than that. Please direct your comments to the mayor and council as a whole, and we, as mayor and councillors, shall not engage in discussion or debate on those items raised by members of the public at this time, and no action may be taken on those items raised in public comments in order that we might comply with the open meeting laws. With that said, the microphone is open.
Hello, Jim Shaw, 522 North Second Street. In the peaceful surroundings of North Port, Sarasota County, Florida, a routine morning turned into a horrifying nightmare when a six-year-old boy, Dalen, was mauled to death by the family's pet football. The local police alerted of a dog bite around 10:30, found themselves faced with an alarming scene. Dalen's injuries were extensive and traumatic. Despite best efforts of medical professionals at two different hospitals, his young life was succumb to wounds inflicted by a three-year-old pit bull. Dog was in the bedroom, child walked in the bedroom to get something, next thing you know, people heard screaming and jumped into action. While the pit bull in question showed no previous signs of violent behavior, the breed itself is associated with a disproportionately high number of attacks. Research compiled by Merrick County, editor of the Animals 24/7, reveals that pit bulls constitute just 6% of the dog population, but they account for 68% of dog attacks and 52% of dog-related deaths since 1982. Clifton's work focuses on humane work and animal cruelty prevention. Having been attacked by dogs twice, including once by a pit bull, he has been maintaining records of fatal and disfiguring attacks for 32 years. His data consistently shows the pit bulls account for over half of these attacks. These grim statistics are supported by research bodies. The Center for Disease Control and Prevention confirms that between 1978 and 1998, pit bulls caused more fatalities than any other breed. Although the CDC no longer collects breed-specific data, 2011 report published in the Annals of Surgery echoes these findings, stating that a person is killed by a pit bull once every 14 days, and two children are injured by a pit bull every day, with young children being especially at risk. Critics say that pit bulls are inherently dangerous, no matter how they're treated, because violence is in their act. Why do hurting dogs hurt? Why do pointing dogs point? They don't learn this behavior. That's selective breeding. Carolyn, president and founder of Dog Bite Dog R. Pit bulls are specifically bred to go into the pit with incredible aggression and fight. A representative from PETA stands by the breed-specific sterilization of pit bulls as a common sense solution that has become a safety issue. These dogs were bred to bait bulls. They were bred to fight each other to the death. Just because we're an animal rights organization doesn't mean we're not concerned about public safety. If this doesn't hit home, ask yourself this question. If you go to a friend or a relative's house, and they own a pit bull, would you leave your child alone in the house or yard where the pit bull was? I assume your answer is no, and if it is, then we definitely need more restrictions on this breed of animals than our dog owners.
You were right to the second that time, Jim. You practice in front of a mirror, don't you?
I put a timer right here and didn't read it several times.
There you go. Wow. Thank you for that. Anybody else like to take the mic for open comment? Okay. Onto the regular meeting things, which are mayor, city, and administrator comments. I can tell you, because I have two of those hats right now, I'll be glad to get rid of one of them. Actually, get rid of two of them sometime, but I don't have any comments. Anybody up here have any? Very good. And then we have another thing I'd like to present at this time, and it is this. As the agenda indicates, a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. And I have a certificate, a nicely enclosed certificate, to hand out to the deserving person and the deserving department for that, but let me tell you a little bit about it It's the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and of Canada, and they go by GFPA, has awarded the certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting to the city for its annual comprehensive financial report for the year ending June 30, 2022. The city has received this award consecutively since 1993. It is a prestigious national award recognizing conformance with the highest standards for preparation of state and local governmental financial reports. In order to be awarded a certificate of achievement, the governmental unit must publish an easily readable and efficiently organized annual comprehensive financial report. The report must satisfy both generally accepted accounting principles and applicable legal requirements. And this year, to set, to put in an aside, it hasn't been easy because with the reporting this year, so this will be next year's look at us, has had to adjust to a lot of changes in what the Iowa legislature has done to try to keep up with that. And at this time, I would like to have Diana Steiner come forward and take this certificate of achievement in excellence in financial reporting. Thank you very much, Diana. Some of you own businesses, you know it's like to be audited, and this is kind of like getting the squeaky clean whistle report again. Okay. Anybody wish to move the, for the consent agenda to be approved?
I'd motion approve the consent agenda, Your Honor.
There a second?
Second.
Nobody called to remove anything from it? Let's call the roll on it.
Lottie Hoff.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Hoop.
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Cal.
Yes.
Very good. Carrie, then please read those.
Approve the minutes for the July 24th, 25th, 27th, 31st meetings, and the bill lists the amount of $1,942,860.66. Approve liquor license renewals for Best Western Regency Inn in Mojitos at 3303 South Center Street, and Paula Ballroom at 1005 West Lincoln Way, Walmart Supercenter number 581 at 2802 South Center Street. Appoint Mike Lottie Hoff to the Solid Waste Management Commission of Marshall County through December 31st of '25. Resolution 2023-157, setting a public hearing for the status of funding update for the Iowa Economic Development Authority Community Development Block grant housing Upper Story Conversion project for Willard's Building. Resolution 2023-158, accepting quitclaim deed for the Creek Sited Estates subdivision. Resolution 2023-159, to authorize the use of donated funds for hospitality expenditures. Resolution 2023-160, to amend the transit fare structure and service change policy for the city of Marshalltown. Resolution 2023-161, approving the amendment to the agreement concerning the maintenance of Bobcat Boulevard on South Third Avenue.
Very good. Thank you. Onto item G resolutions, the first one of which is what?
Resolution 2023-162, allowing open containers on public ways for Oktoberfest events on September 21st through the 24th.
Move for approval.
Thank you.
Second.
Discussion.
Yes, Your Honor. Oktoberfest will be having a liquor license holder of thirsty pigs at Ames, and they have asked for open containers on the public ways at different times during the event. We have Dwayne Dixon here with the Oktoberfest Committee, and he'll give you a summary of the event.
Hello, Dwayne Dixon. On behalf of Oktoberfest, we are planning for the event to be September 21st through the 24th, bringing back the usual events, Kids' Night, Car Show, Car Hop, Carnival, all the food stands, doing live music on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. As far as the layout, we'll be announcing all the various details throughout the next week or two. We're still finalizing a few of them, so for now, a few of them, we're just kind of keeping secret. Other than that, it's pretty much a similar event as far as what we've done in the past.
Thank you. Any questions up here at the council dais or comments? Any public comments? Very good. Thank you. Let's call a roll.
Thompson.
Yes.
Hoop.
No.
Isom.
Yes.
Cal.
Yes.
Lottie Hoff.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Very good. That carried. Thanks for all the work that we know goes into that every year. It's one of those things that just attracts people to downtown. And on to the next one.
Public hearing and resolution 2023-163, approving the interlocal grant agreement for the Iowa Burn Justice Assistance Grant Program for $15,923, split 50% with Marshall County, and approval of memorandum of understanding to share grant funds with Marshall County.
Move to approve, Your Honor.
Yeah. So I should probably declare the public hearing open, and the time is 5:42 PM. I'd be happy to short-circuit it frankly myself. Did you get any written comments at the clerk's office? I can't imagine you did.
No, Your Honor.
Does anybody wish to comment publicly about this one? Can't imagine anybody would. I thought we were going to have a Katie up here.
She took off.
Oh.
She thought going home and having supper with mom was more fun. I agree. Mike Tupper, Marshawn Police Department. So this is a standard grant that we talk about every year. Every year, the money gets a little bit less. Good news, bad news, we sure could use more money. That's the bad news. The good news is it's kind of, the amount of money we get is connected to our crime stats. So when the money goes down, that means your crime stats are going down. So that's a good thing, too. But there was a memo in your packet. We talked about it at the last council meeting. I'm happy to answer any questions. It's nothing too complicated.
By our way, first by the council.
Your Honor, I have a question, if I may.
May.
Since there's no representatives from the county here, chief, can we just keep the whole thing, then?
No, we cannot. No, we cannot.
Sometimes I like how you think, though, Gary.
I'd like to shift all the paperwork responsibilities to the county, because we do it every year, and they just collect the 50%.
Very good. I don't doubt it. Invail us up here. Otherwise, if from the public wish to comment on this one? All right. Actually, I did that out of order, didn't I? I already asked for public comments. I'm getting senile. So council comments, we've had those. Declare the public hearing is closed at now 5:44 PM. And now, is there anybody who wishes?
Now it's my turn to motion approve, Your Honor.
There you go. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Cal.
Yes.
Lottie Hoff.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Like, the four lane was going to get done when our daughter graduated from Iowa State and was almost damn near to the day. The last time I have to run a council meeting is when I'll finally figure out how to do these things, you know, like with muscle memory or remote. All right, what's our next one?
Public hearing and resolution 2023-164, authorizing the Marshalltown Municipal Transit Reduction of Services.
That public hearing is open now at 5:45 PM. I'll bet you didn't get any written comments, did you?
No, your honor.
Anybody from the public who's to comment about this one? Let's do staff review.
Good evening, Heather Thomas, Public Works. We also have Kevin Pegors here, who's the transit administrator. We are struggling with staffing our transit drivers, so we went and looked at our fixed routes and what we can do to try to still provide as much service to all of the residents in Marshalltown, but also realizing we don't have enough drivers to drive those buses. So we are proposing a permanent reduction right now of the elimination of the purple route. The purple route is the route that goes down to the college, the hospital, Center Street, 12th Street, and 6th Street every 30 minutes. We're proposing to absorb some of those stops and other routes as well. So this would be a reduction of the purple route, which runs nine and a half hours a day right now, and this would be an increase of an hour and a half on two of our other shorter routes to be able to still accommodate servicing the college twice a day and the hospital four times a day every two hours. With that, I'll open it up for questions, and Kevin's here as well if we have anything more technical.
It is now time for council comments. Any?
Your honor, if I may?
You may.
Heather, I just want to correct or clarify one thing. You said a permanent, but that's not saying it could come back later. I mean, it's permanent for now.
Right. Earlier this evening in the consent agenda, we updated the policy. It was required to do that on behalf of the state and the federal anytime we do what's classified as a major reduction in service. We're using the word permanent to designate that it's a major reduction. Earlier this summer, we did a temporary postponement of operating the purple route, but since staffing changes have not improved, we are going to go ahead and make that permanent for now.
I'll bet if we get enough drivers, we can renew it, and I wonder if we have to...
We are only required to have the public hearing for reduction, so, yep.
Got it. Okay. Thank you. Any other council comments or questions? Then I'll declare the public hearing closed at 5:47 PM and entertain a motion to approve it.
So move, your honor?
Second.
Roll call.
Thompson?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Cal?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Very good. And the next item is what?
Resolution 2023-165, approving the temporary appointment of someone who's here tonight to fill the vacancy of the third ward counselor.
Are we doing the interviews first before anybody wants to do that motion, or should we move to approve the process first and then segue into the, yeah, that's really the way, way to do it? So I'd call for motion to just approve the process first. Is there a motion to do that? What was the word in the comic strip today? Crickets? I only hear crickets.
Your honor, if I may?
You may.
I'd like to make a comment. Going through this and thinking about this, I know that the three people are here, ready to go, and all are three, all three are very good candidates. I think choosing between them would be very hard, and I think after giving it quite a bit of thought, I think we ought to just let the ward vote on who they would really like.
Thanks for that comment. Let me try one more time and give you about another five seconds to see if anybody wants to move to interview them and retain someone, pick someone tonight, and if that doesn't happen, we'll go on to the next item. Okay. Gentlemen, thank you for coming. Thanks for your interest. We're looking for good candidates who will be on the ballot coming up shortly. And then for the public's information, anyone selected tonight would have only been able to attend two meetings. Might have helped if we have another tie vote like we've had in the recent past, so some, some people thought that was a good idea to do tonight, but we really do appreciate your interest in the job. You're welcome to stick around, but I've always invited people to come for one purpose, and it's over to not have to feel like they have to stick around. But I don't want to chase you out, but don't want you to sit there if you'd rather go home. Okay. Onto the next item. And that is ordinance is number one, is what? Only one is what?
Ordinance 15069, to amend the code of ordinances, City of Marshalltown, Iowa, Chapter 73, recreational vehicles, to add language for golf car regulations, second reading.
Let's see if there are crickets on this one.
Move to approve, your honor.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second, your honor.
Discussion up here.
Your honor, this amendment is going to reinstate the language for golf car regulations that was subsequently removed during the recreational vehicle amendment back in 2022.
Any public comment on this one? Roll call.
Isom?
Yes.
Cal?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
No.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Your honor, could I make a motion to waive the third reading, please?
Sure may do that, and it's on the floor. Is there a second?
I'll second that, your honor.
Okay. Roll call on this one.
Cal?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Very good. That carried is effective. Thank you. Okay. Onto discussion items, the first of which is severance request for 2460A and 2460D of Reed Avenue. Who wants to lead this discussion?
Good evening, Heather Thomas, Public Works Director, filling in for the Housing and Community Development Director this evening. So we have a request in front of us to sever two parcels from the city limits. Those city parcels are these two parcels here on the very south edge of our district. So with that, the council has the opportunity to discuss that and then make a decision this evening whether you would like a resolution brought back at the next council meeting to approve the severance. We've gone ahead and requested comments from several parties. Those comments are included in your packet. We also have the landowners present if you have questions for them. With that, I'll open it up for discussion and comment.
Okay. Well, let's start with the council comments or questions, and then we'll open up to the floor, including the owners. The mic's open to the floor. If anybody wishes to address this one?
The Monta Eaton 2460A Reed Avenue or 2460, it includes both parcels. There's a memo in there from Alliance Energy that says they provide a service. They don't. Their utility pole sits on the corner of our house lot, and their utility line runs down the rear, be the northern side of College View Lane. So I just wanted to clarify that one. We get our utilities from consumer electric, water's from rural water. We have our own septic system. The highway is our front road into the city, which is, the maintenance is provided by the DOT, so the city doesn't have anything to do with that. The nearest fire hydrant is whatever, 2,870-some feet away, which is over a half a mile. It's located off of the map that's showing. It's in front of New Hope Church, so if there was ever a fire, they'd have to shut down the highway. I don't know how that's going to work out, but that'd be up to the fire department. I'm sure they're capable of handling it. I don't think the DOT had any comments. I think they misunderstood what was happening because they have some wording about splitting the properties. It's not really a split, it's just a total severance from the city. County auditor states that it'd be a good idea to sever the property and square up the city limits. I'm not sure why it was ever entered into the city, but that was in 1969, before anybody here was involved with it. So if you guys have any questions, I can answer for you.
Any questions by the council? Any other public comment? Anybody wish to, in the discussion item, direct staff to work out a procedure heading one direction or the other on this?
Your honor, I would like to direct staff to come back with us if it is a resolution, if that's the legal next step. You're nodding yes, Alicia, so yes, I would move that we direct staff to come back for the next meeting with a resolution to grant the severance from the city.
If that's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Well, let's call the roll. Did I miss anybody? Okay. Roll call.
Cal?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Schneider?
No.
Thompson?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
That carried, staff has its direction on that one. Thank you.
Your honor, a point of clarification. Is that something that, I don't know what the legal guidelines are, will that come back on the next council agenda then? The next meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Next discussion item is the police department purchase of global and obligation satellite system equipment. Chief Tupper. I guess Katie really would have had to stick around quite a while.
She would have definitely done a better job, I guarantee you. Guarantee you. So Mike Tupper, Marshawn Police Department, again. So traditionally, our department has had a traffic crash investigation team. Our traffic crash investigators retired, both retired. Gosh, it's probably been pushing five years now since they retired, and we have had difficulty finding the right staff person to carry on this very technical work. We do have somebody now, Sergeant Paul Heitman, that has gone through training, and he, there's a lot of math associated with this type of work, okay? And most people don't become cops because of their strong math skills. Paul has great math skills. He's a very smart young man, and he is very passionate about traffic crash investigation. So he has gone through the, a couple rounds now of traffic crash investigation training, and we need equipment to help him with his work. So when I started in this job 31 years ago, we would use tape measures and little rolling wheel things that you sometimes see. It's not that way anymore. It's a very technical job, it's an electronic world that we live in, and we traditionally have not had our own equipment. We have worked with Public Works here in Marshalltown to meet that need. After some discussion with Public Works and with, with my own staff, we feel like it's probably in the best interests of everybody if the police department has its own dedicated equipment for this job. And Sergeant Heitman has investigated the type of equipment that is most commonly used, including by the State Patrol, and that was in your packet. So he got a quote for some equipment that runs around $4,200. Now, in my memo, I said we're going to request an amount not to exceed $5,000 from local option sales tax, because I've been doing this job long enough to know that when they want to spend $4,200, they'll probably find something else that they need that they weren't thinking of. So if we purchase this equipment, there's also annual software licensing, around $674, that we would have to pull out of the general fund to keep this equipment operational. Why is it important? We have more crash investigations than you might imagine, and what we've been doing for the last, well, since everybody retired, is we rely heavily upon the State Patrol to help us with these technical crash investigations. They are not always available to us, and they also have limits on when they're going to come out, and it's usually, it's got to be a really serious, serious issue or a death has to be involved. We have lots of crashes that we would like to investigate at a more technical level that we're unable to investigate right now without this equipment and without properly trained personnel. So I think this is a great opportunity for the Marshawn Police Department to reconstitute its traffic crash investigation team, and it's, it's really not a lot of money in the grand scheme of things. So the request would be to come back at the next meeting with a resolution asking for up to $5,000 to purchase this global navigation satellite system equipment so that we can open up some crash investigation opportunities for Sergeant Heitman. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions or comments by the council?
Your honor, if I may?
You may.
So, so chief, this, this component of a crash investigation is strictly a measuring tool?
Yes.
And there's a lot more that goes into a crash investigation?
There's a lot that goes into a crash investigation, but measuring the scene is critically important, so that's why we need this equipment. This equipment will also come in handy when we're mapping out outdoor crime scenes, by the way, so it'll be used for more than just traffic crashes.
Thank you. Thank you, your honor.
Other council comments? Anybody wish to suggest, give direction to staff?
Your honor, I make a motion that the city council approve up to $5,000 for the equipment that Chief Tupper needs, bring it back to the next meeting.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Anybody wish to discuss further? Let's call the roll.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Cal?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
No.
Okay. That carried, staff has direction. I didn't want to sway anybody one way or the other on that one, but my life is about 95% dealing with car crashes, including today's depositions of two people up in northern Iowa, and a lot of counties and cities have this equipment and even better. I mean, you don't have to go as far as Grundy to get the, they had original drone photos taken and really good measurements, and, well, I'll tell you, if you get involved in a lawsuit, whether you're the party that was hurt or the party that is sued, it is really nice to know what happened, so I'm encouraged to have that vote on that. All right. Next discussion item is cost implement to employee classification and compensation study. Diana?
Good evening, Diana Steiner, Finance Director. So at the last meeting, Gov HR came and presented to you the different scenarios. If we wanted to go with the compensation study, they presented the 50% and 65th percentile, and you directed us to come up with a cost of what that might be. So, let me make this a little bit bigger. So with the implementation of the new pay plan at the 65th percentile, from January through June, it would be an overall additional $60,000. The general fund would be $77,000, road use tax, $335. The HUD grant goes down because we currently don't have a housing director, and the enterprise funds, transit drivers are not filled. So what I'm asking you tonight is how to fund the $77,000 for the general fund employees. These other ones will be funded either by the road use tax or grants or enterprise These other ones will be funded either by the road use tax or grants or enterprise funds. So a couple options would be to transfer the money from local option sales tax. So right now, there's about $1.5 million in that fund, projected to be in that fund by the end of the fiscal year. Or another option would be the additional revenue that we're generating from the automated traffic enforcement. We had originally budgeted a net amount of $6,500. I just talked with them this week, and we'll be getting payments for tickets of about $280. So 280 times $100 a ticket, and we get about 65%. We pay $35 a ticket, we keep $65 a ticket on a $100 ticket. That'd be $18,200 net cost additional. Take that times 10, that's $182,000. So that would be an option as well. So, and for the council discussion, should we proceed with the pay plan effective January 1st, and how do you want to pay for the general fund? Because it will require a budget amendment.
Okay. Thank you, Diana. Underlying this whole thing is difficulty in recruitment, including we need to replace one of the top staff directors here. The police department is at least too short. Fire department's had some problems. We badly need an engineer to help Heather in that department. She's, oh, she is really working too many hours and getting too much done. It scares me to get the emails with the length and detail that I get from her and the time of day and night that she's writing them, so I have to throw in that before we start talking about trying to keep up with our cities and counties around us that employ people. Okay, well, that said, I'll shut up and open the floor to the council.
Your Honor, I'd make a motion to begin this January 1st and to use local option sales tax.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Let's discuss the motion and the second, then. Any further discussion up here?
Your Honor, if I may?
You may.
Diana, is there a way, does this have to be all-inclusive, or can we take certain jobs out of this mix? Can we raise the pay for all the staff except the department heads? And the reason I'm going to, before you answer, the reason I'm going to say that is, we have an opening for a city administrator. We got qualified applicants for those top-level jobs. We, it's my understanding, we have qualified applicants for the Housing and Community Director, Community Development Director, we're sitting on those applications. So obviously, we're not having trouble filling the top-level jobs, so we must be paying enough, we're in comparison, but obviously, we can't fill bus drivers, we can't fill electrician, we can't fill some of the entry-level jobs. So I'm all in favor of the boots on the ground, so to speak, getting raises, but not to throw money at department heads, in my opinion, that are already well-paid. So is there a way to split this out and divide this up?
Yes, we can recollect it for that purpose, but then you're not changing, so you're basically saying that the directors are not going to be on the new pay plan?
Yes, that's what I'm saying.
They're going to be on the old pay plan.
That's what I'm saying.
Your Honor, if I may comment?
You may.
Counselor Thompson, if you looked at the wage study, this would not impact any of the base salaries of any of the department heads. They already fall in to greater than the 65th percentile.
This does, this does have step increases in it.
But it does. It clarifies the step increases consistently across the board.
Other comments or questions by the council?
So I just want to clarify that. So a lot of staff are already at the top right now, so and the implementation of the pay plan, now you, now those people will now get step increases, or they're not right now, because they're at the top.
My recollection of the wage study is every department had met the minimum of the 65th percentile, actually exceeded that.
Pretty much.
So moving to this does not automatically kick in a salary raise. The steps are a secondary thing, but looking at the discrepancy between the stages, or steps, that this would be a lot more consistent across the board, which would impact everybody. So I think that addresses what you're, the heart of what you're getting at, Counselor Thompson.
Anybody, I don't know, the other councilor wished to comment on this one, or Diana, do you have anything further on that very topic? I know Jill from HR would probably be a logical person to call upon, but I know she finally got a well-deserved time off.
Well, are you asking me to recompute it for the directors or not? Because it does take a lot of time.
It's not part of the existing motion.
Right, yeah, exactly. Okay, I don't think, well, let me ask if the public has any comments about this, and if not, we'll take a vote on it.
Mike Tupper, Marshawn Police Department. Last couple meetings, there's been some negative commentary about department directors and what they make. Your department directors work their tails off for this community. We put in a ton of hours beyond 40 every week. We are passionate about serving this community and making Marshalltown the best that it can be. We are not overpaid, and it's disappointing to hear those types of remarks from an elected official. Your department directors work very hard and deal with a lot of complex issues on a daily basis to try to keep this all running, and I respect the fact that you have a very difficult job when it comes to managing the finances. And I know that there's a lot of tough challenges ahead of us, but I would, I would hope, I would hope that this body would have a little more respect for the department directors and the work that they do, and we can focus on maybe a more positive path. I think that this is necessary. You don't want to give me a raise, don't give me a raise. But I'm going to retire in the next couple years. Good luck finding somebody to work this job for what you're paying me. It's not, it's not going to meet the market, so that's my two cents for whatever it's worth. I appreciate your time.
And I am embarrassed to forget that I'm not just the mayor, I'm also the acting city administrator, and I have been now for several weeks, and so I'll take off my mayor hat and I will put on my city administrator hat. I will tell you just how much I have learned to appreciate the directors that we have here, the top staff people and the people that they are overseeing. I'm amazed at the number of hours that are put in and the extra work that's done, and I am really fearful that we're going to lose more good top staff people. This has not been an easy time to work for the city of Marshalltown, losing our city administrator and losing our 22-year housing and development director. And so from, my hope is that later tonight in this closed special, special meeting, we'll hire a new city administrator, and I'll get rid of this hat, which I am not qualified for and do not want to keep wearing. But while I was wearing it, I got to know some people a little better, I've hung around the city hall a little more, and I've grown to really appreciate what we have here. Chief Tupper isn't the only chief who's likely to be retiring soon. Chief Ayerson is getting to the point where he could comfortably leave shortly, and these are going to be tough spots to fill, and we have not yet been able to fill out the Michelle Spahnheimer's position. I've also grown to, I always did appreciate what Michelle did and what Jessica did, but I'll tell you this, in the last three, four weeks, that appreciation has really grown. So I'll take off that hat and ask if anybody else in the public wishes to comment.
Your Honor?
Yep.
Just one comment. Chief Tupper, don't let one person speak on behalf of the rest of us. I think a big thing is, regardless of people sticking around or not, doesn't speak to the fact we're paying people enough. I think loyal employees becomes a question of being an asset to the city and not a liability, and that's kind of what I heard, and I just want to echo that. I share some of the appreciation from others of what you do and the departments do, so don't let one voice speak to the manner of which you guys are interpreting it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Roll call.
Lottie Hoff.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Hoop.
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Cal.
Yes.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, and the next and last discussion item is the four-year 24 borrowing for the GeoBond Series 2023. Diana, again.
Diana Steiner, Finance Director. So, and, well, while we were building the budget last spring, we put together our capital improvement plan, and we talked about these projects being bonded for. So I wanted to see what your thoughts were, if this, if these are still the projects we want to do. So $500,000 in the sidewalk gap projects, $7.1 million in the downtown implementation plan, $710,000 in the state street stormwater, and $3 million in street improvements. So we are limited to how much we can borrow based on, I'm sorry, it's on the other page, based on our debt capacity. So statewide, the legal debt capacity is 5%, so that would be $92 million, and then we take off our payments, so that leaves $37 million. However, our policy says that we can only borrow 70% of that 5%. So that puts us at $65 million, and subtract our payments that were, are due this year, so $9.8 million is all we can borrow. So knowing that, we need to reduce some of these projects. So the Public Works Director has indicated to me that she thinks we can defer the $500,000 off the top. So we still need to cut down another $1 million if you want to borrow for these projects.
Diana, I'll ask a question. When, so based off your timeline, there needs to be a decision made by September 25th?
Right, September 25th is normally when we would set the hearing date.
And so based off of that, second council meeting would be the 25th. I guess I would be in favor of having a special meeting if need be, but depending on how the franchise fee works out, and if priorities aren't communicated from the public based off the special election, then I would be voting probably to take some stuff off of the street improvements if that's not truly a priority of the community. So I'd wait to make a decision post the election. And I would end the conversation tonight.
Other comments or discussion up here? I didn't sense a strong suggestion from staff that we send a motion back to staff. Is that a fair assessment? Okay. Very good. The next item on the agenda is a closed session for personnel, and let me read this to see if anybody wishes to move to go into closed session based on this proviso. The closed session pursuant to Section 21.5, subsection 1I of the Iowa Code, to evaluate the professional competency of an individual whose appointment, hiring, performance, or discharge is being considered when necessary to prevent needless and irreparable injury to that individual's reputation, and that individual requests a closed session. The city of Marshalltown has a, has an attorney-client relationship with Lynch Dallas by Resolution 2021-161, approved June 13, 2022. The council made by console action, made by console action by motion, that didn't make sense to me, following the closed session if directed by the city's attorney, and it's my understanding that we do have that written, request by the person to be considered, and we have Holly, who is a partner in the law firm that is our city, acting city attorney, available to us to confirm that that is the case. Holly Corkery, would you confirm that?
Yes, Your Honor, I would confirm that it's appropriate under Iowa law to go into closed session this evening.
Very good. Then as soon as we've got the room cleared, we'll call for the motion that closes the session.